Ms. Finney, and I call the meeting to order. First thing, before we proceed to see if there's any public comment tonight, sorry, I just thought we should, as we've unfortunately done a few times on the school committee, take a moment of silence to honor those who lost their lives in the school shooting in Nashville, and take a moment to just meditate on what each of us might possibly be able to do to try to put an end to this. Thank you. First on our agenda tonight, we have public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make any public comments? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to general business. The first item on the agenda is student recognition. And Dr. Cummings is going to introduce our speaker tonight.
Yes, I'm very happy to introduce Margie Daniels. She's the Executive Director of the Massachusetts Partnerships for Youth Organization. Tonight, Margie will be recognizing one of our fabulous seniors, Noelle Fedor.
Thank you so much. First of all, it's just such an honor and a privilege to be here in front of the Grafton School Committee. I thank you for so graciously inviting me. I come with such very, very good news because you have a student that has created a phenomenal poster. I want to comment that we had in our annual project contest, we had over 400 entries, so to stand out and receive an honorable mention in that field is quite amazing. And I have to say, as you can see here, the poster is absolutely beautiful. I just would like to say a few words about Massachusetts Partnerships for Youth, where the Grafton Schools are a fairly new member of our organization. We were founded in 1988, and our mission is prevention and intervention in matters of health and safety for youth. I appreciate you taking the time out to remember what has happened recently. And I would just comment that we also have taken a very big leadership role in Massachusetts regarding school safety. So it's something that is very near and dear to our hearts. And we do a lot of work in mental and behavioral health, social and emotional learning. We do a lot about internet safety and trauma-sensitive schools, along with diversity, equity, inclusion, a lot of anti-racist initiatives. So, as I say, I am here tonight with some extremely good news. I'm hoping that someone might be nice enough to take a picture when I do this presentation. Either with my phone or someone can send it to me. We do like to share our good news with others, so, Noelle, can you come up here? Is this a good place to stand?
Are we taking the picture yet? Is this what we're doing?
I think it's a...
Or are we gonna...
It's an action shot.
It's an action shot? All right, we like to take them in front of the thing.
Oh, yes.
The town seal.
So we'll get out of the way, and then you can come up here.
Maybe Kevin can... You don't have the phone.
I have a phone. I thought she asked. She literally said, "If you take my phone..."
If I take the picture, will I get the poster? Margie, if I take the picture, will I get the poster?
You'll have to arm wrestle Noelle in that one. I know what I'd say if I were her.
We're taking two pictures here. One, two, three. Come on, do it again. One, two, three. One, two, three. Yeah, with my phone. Do you have any other agenda items?
Not at all, Kevin.
Do you want me in the picture? Okay. Now we have three phones.
Four phones.
I'm just gonna steal Liz's. Because Liz is gonna post it, and then I'm gonna steal it.
That's great. Congratulations.
I want you to know that the selection committee is quite rigorous. We have school superintendents, police chiefs, fire chiefs, counselors, and some community leaders come together here to judge. We take it extremely seriously. We get so many entries, and we really want to make sure that we pick the best of the best. We're also very blessed to have some art teachers join us, and they look at things sometimes with a slightly different eye than we do. Our theme this year is "Art loves you, love it back," which is about ecology. And we were very interested, of course, in the messages. The art teachers are very interested in the artwork, and they just gave you such high grades for making these. So I want to give you, and I have to take this back, but I will get it back to you. I can give it to you at M.A.S.S. or something. However, I have a copy that I'll give to your parents that you create, but I'll give you the real thing. And we also have a certificate for you to recognize your achievement. Thank you. And that's for you. We also have gift. Great. There's a gift card. Thank you so much. Can I give you a hug?
Sure.
Congratulations, and best luck with your future endeavors. I had the pleasure of talking to Noelle's parents for a few minutes before the meeting started. It sounds like she has a very exciting future ahead, so she makes Grafton proud.
Very true.
I want to thank you and my art teachers' parents, and of course... That's all I had to say. Congratulations.
That's perfect. Congratulations. Oh, thank you very much.
It's always so nice to come with good news.
Yes. All right, thank you very much.
Congratulations. All right, next on the agenda, we have the DECA field trip proposal.
Yes, so tonight, I'm looking for approval for an out-of-state field trip. The trip will involve Mr. Maxwell, taking eight exceptional GHS students, all part of DECA, and they're attending the DECA International Conference in Orlando, Florida. The group's gonna leave on Friday, April 21st, and return on Wednesday, April 26th. And I've shared all of the in-depth required documentation with the committee previously.
All right, thank you. So I'll entertain a motion to approve that?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the field trip for DECA.
We have a motion on the table.
Second.
Any seconds? Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we have four.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
Fantastic. They'll be very excited.
All right, next up, we have a school update from NGES and SGES, North Grafton Elementary School and South Grafton Elementary School. Welcome principals. If you could, for our record and for our secretary taking notes, could you just introduce yourselves?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So I'm Julie Flynn, and I am the proud principal at North Grafton Elementary School.
And I'm Melissa Wallace, the proud principal at South Grafton Elementary School. New this year, as of July 1st.
So as we did, I think last year was our first year, actually, we co-presented to be able to share a little bit of an update of all the different things that are happening at our school, schools, rather. And obviously, given that Melissa is new this year, we wanted to be able to split it up a little bit. Last year, our presentation was a little bit more intertwined, but I wanted to give Melissa the opportunity to be able to share a little bit more specifically to her time here at South Grafton now. So I'm going to go first, and then I'll turn it over to Melissa, but hopefully, share a little bit with all of you around all the great things happening in our schools. So since we met last, North Grafton Elementary School has had a lot of new things going on. To start off with, we've had some changes in our staffing. One of the most recent hires that we've made, or decisions that has been made around hiring, is that we added kindergarten paraprofessionals at both North and South. For those of you who have been on for quite some time, that's been a topic of conversation for many years. And so we were beyond excited last year to be able to add them in for this past fall. So we have paraprofessionals in each of our kindergarten classrooms, supporting our students. And whether they are working on building independence, you know, in life skills, facilitating play, you know, interactions with kiddos, and/or providing small group support while a teacher is providing instructional support, they've been invaluable. So thank you to Dr. Cummings and all of you for supporting that. As we've talked about that for a number of years now, we feel very, very blessed to have them. It makes a very big difference when you have that many little people in a room, some of which have some skills and some of which are still learning skills, to have an additional adult there to be able to support that. Additionally, in terms of some changes in our building, just to share a couple of changes. Ms. Akneuan moved from grade one into our literacy specialist position. She is outstanding. She was an outstanding first-grade teacher, and she has seamlessly moved into the position as reading specialist in place of Mrs. Tuleen, who retired mid-year. And then Mrs. Fletcher, this year, also a long-term, long-time first-grade teacher, moved into a special education role this year. And I think it's been awesome to watch her blossom in something that she's obviously always been very passionate about, but more so having the opportunity to do so in this position. And the reason I share those two moves particularly is because our staff are constantly working on themselves, and they're constantly looking to push themselves to become better at their practice and in their field. And it was really nice, in particular, that these two not only pursued their degree, their graduate degrees, and were able to obtain them, but that we were able to keep them here in Grafton, and more specifically, at North Grafton Elementary School. So I'm very happy about that. In terms of our school advisory council, we are back in full swing this year. Last year, we were sort of touch and go coming out of COVID, but we are back in full swing this year. So I just wanted to give a little shout-out to them and a thank you to them. Here with us tonight, we have Kelly Carr, teacher, and Justin Compton, parent. And then we also have Kristen Green, who is a parent representative. So we're a small council, but just as we are a small school, we're small and mighty. And we thank them for the work that they are doing, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in just a moment. And then more to come on this, but we have a number of new things that have come up this year with regards to curriculum. We've started a new math program in district at our level called Envisions. We've also implemented something called the STAR Assessment, which is giving us a lot of great information, particularly in the area of math. And then just recently new is Freckle, which I'll talk a little bit more about, and PBIS, which stands for Positive Behavior Intervention Supports. Second area I wanted to share out on is our Tower of Books Challenge. This is something that we've done at North Grafton for about five-ish years. And it's just a great way to connect our families at home to reading, which is so integral and important for our kiddos at the pre-K to 1 level. So whether you're in preschool, you're in first grade, we have a number of different challenges that kids have the opportunity to take home with them and work with their families on, whether they're being read to or they're working on learning to read themselves, to try and involve families in their child's literacy growth. So a little graph right there is just our first challenge that we did to kick-start the program, and that was to try and get the majority of students in each class to complete their first challenge. So obviously, you can see from the graph that we were able to do so. And then the picture of that cute little Carter right there is our most recent challenge, is we call it the Shelfy Challenge. So finish the challenge and take a selfie. And so he was at first to complete that challenge. And then, tough to see, but as part of our initial challenge, which was to get the majority of kids in each class to participate, the classes that did meet that challenge got to have a Flashlight Friday in our gym, which was the first time we'd ever done it, and it was such an amazing and easy thing to do with our kiddos. So the two outside pictures are just kiddos with their flashlights, reading, you know, either in a group or by themselves. And then the little guy in the middle there was just super proud of the fact that he had completed his challenge. So we got a cute picture of him. So we're happy to be able to work through this program and keep it going. I think it's a nice way to get our parents involved and have that, you know, sometimes the conversation of, what can I be doing with my kiddo at home? Is there homework I can be doing? And really, at our level, the best thing you can be doing with your kiddo is reading with them. Either reading with them or reading to them. And so this program, I think, as you can see, each one of those colored slips on the board represents a challenge that had been completed. And a challenge typically has anywhere from eight to 10 books on it that they have to complete. So it's quite a bit. The third area that I was gonna share out on, and this is something that we are jointly working with South Grafton on, is that this past year, we were, both schools were accepted into the SEB, which stands for Social Emotional Behavior Academy, which is put together by the Department of Education in collaboration with the May Institute. And it's a three-year program to support schools in their ability to put together, implement, and fully run a positive behavior support plan within their school. So I've shared out, and in the past Doreen has shared out, different things that we've done at our two schools. And I think probably, if I went back and watched the recording of last year's, we called it PBS Lite or PBS Like. We were doing different things that had some elements of positive behavior support in there, but it wasn't really a full, you know, we weren't really fully running the plan, and it wasn't fully across our entire school. It was bits and pieces. So when we were accepted this past fall, we both jumped in right away, and we're excited to be able to do it. And we have a team of eight staff at our school that are part of it. There are summer lease days, but a lot of the work is really happening in our building. We've been working during our staff meetings to include everybody in the work. But ultimately, what has come of it is that we are shifting sort of our expectations. We've been NGS cares for quite some time now, to keeping it a little bit more kid-friendly and having, you know, just the three, just the three things. Be kind, be safe, be responsible. And so what we're looking at right now is working with our teachers to create lesson plans for every aspect of our school day around what that looks like, sounds like, feels like for our students, whether they're in the hallway or they're in the cafeteria, if they're in an all-school meeting, or if they're in a special, and trying to create lesson plans to be able to teach those things. Not only in a way that all teachers have the same type of access to that lesson planning, but so that kids are getting the same language across the board and the same understanding from every single teacher. Everyone has participated in our professional development, from Mrs. Torres, our secretary, to Mr. Camuso, our, you know, and Ms. Debbie in the cafeteria. So we're really trying to get every single person in the building to be a part of it so that there's never a question about how you would respond or what you would expect of a student. And those two little friends are Just with Waddles, newest member of our school, who currently is traveling class to class to provide a little bit of positive reinforcement to our teachers for the wonderful work that they're doing. And then lastly, for North Grafton, but probably coincides a lot with South Grafton too, since we're doing the same thing, is just a little bit of a curriculum update. Like I said, there's been some new programming and curriculum in place this year, primarily around math, and that is that worksheet down at the bottom there with the birdie on it, that's Envisions. Our teachers have worked so hard this year to understand, know, implement, you know, create a scope and sequence, look at our report card, and start to think about that for next year around how to utilize Envisions to best instruct our students in the area of math. And it certainly has been a shift. We had been using Orgo since I had come in, so quite some time. However, if you have students at the upper elementary level, you know that Envisions was the math program they were using. And so when we, you know, needed to make a decision on where to go next, it made sense to move in the same direction, you know, to have that continuity for our students as well. So our teachers have had release time, they've had professional development time, they have collaborated across North and South quite a bit. And, you know, there's still work to do, but they are, they're committed to it and are doing such a wonderful job with it. And like I said, the next step is looking at our report card and how, what we had outlined 12 years ago-ish, how we need to revamp that moving into next year. The STAR Assessment is an opportunity for us to look at evaluating our students and assessing our students in the area of math so that we can better determine what type of need there is. And that's new to us. We haven't, we've talked about that a lot at this meeting over the years, that we've always had our literacy assessments, but we haven't necessarily had a standardized math assessment to use. And so the STAR Assessment is providing us with some excellent data. Definitely taking a little bit of time for our little people to learn how to take the assessment because it is, you know, they are on computers and are on iPads, so it's a little bit different than what they're used to. But we're working through that, and it's giving us some nice data, and the teachers are using that data to better understand how to support their students. And also, we have math interventionists, similar to our literacy interventionists, so we've been able to use the data from this to support which students require that level of intervention at this point in time. And then that cute little pig over there is Freckle. Freckle is a program through Renaissance learning that allows us to, different teachers, to differentiate some of the instruction for students. So in the past, we've had a couple of different programs in literacy, Lexia, RosKids, Reading Uzi, that have been able to support our students in that area. Freckle does, can be used in both, but certainly for math, it's a nice opportunity to be able to pinpoint certain areas that a student is in need of support with. So for our first-grade students, we can take the information from the STAR Assessment, and it puts it right into Freckle so that they're, they're meeting them exactly where they are with the skills that they need to. And then additionally, teachers have the opportunity to plug something, if they're noticing something in the classroom, they can say, "I want them to work on this, you know, they need to address place value," and that might be something that they work on. And then you can't see it, but down here, that little spiral right there, is a Hegarty book. We've talked about Hegarty for the last five years in terms of introducing that at the K-1 level. And this year, we finally introduced it at the pre-K level, too. Preschool, we're looking at exposing students to curriculum. We're not necessarily looking at end-of-year standards that they need to be at, but we want to expose them. And, you know, obviously, Phineas McAwareness is something that we can very easily introduce to our preschool students, and the Hegarty program has done a great job with that, so that's new to them this year. And that all sort of comes together for us at North Grafton in the work that we're going to be doing moving forward next year in our school improvement plan that we just went through our school advisory council, as well as our staff. We'll be focusing on math, PBIS, and social-emotional learning for our students and staff. So that is all for North Grafton. Any questions?
Questions from the committee, or do you want to wait till...
Yep, we can wait till the answers.
Yeah, we can wait, probably. So she just did her whole presentation.
Nice try.
So, because it's basically, you're doing a great job collaborating between the both buildings, so I'll touch upon a little bit what we're doing at South Grafton. But in regards to South Grafton, I came in July. I'm very humbled and honored to be part of the Grafton school community. It's been a pleasure working here. Coming from a K-5 building down a pre-K to 1 is ultimately my dream job. I tell Jay every day how happy my husband is that they hired me here because I'm happy. So I just wanted to say thank you to the community here. We welcome back the staff. A lot of my time this year is really trying to connect with the staff, having them be able to trust me as their leader, really to build relationships. So I've been doing that throughout the entire year, along with a lot of the curriculum updates. So we welcome, you know, the students back in September. We had the parents come and do some, you know, chalk the walk. I had, in August, I had some reading time where they could come in and I could read stories to the kids so they could get to know me before school started, so it was a positive way to start the school year. Along with that, I want to thank Jay. He allowed me to redo the front entranceway at South Grafton Elementary School. You can't see it, but I actually tied my husband to come in and help hang the pictures. A lot of the artwork is from the high school. The students at the high school provide North and South with artwork, and we, I use that as the frame for designing the front hallway. And then I have a friend in, from Holden, who actually created the backdrop, which is actually wallpaper that says, "Welcome to South Grafton Elementary School," and then we just tied everything in. So when you walk in, it's warm, it's inviting. We have a nice touchscreen TV where I do lessons with the kids in the front hallway, or we provide, you know, you know, different pictures and things like that. So it was very, a lot of the staff and community members really thought it was a great addition to South Grafton. We also started Ollie. We have our own mascot now at South Grafton. It's the owl. And we, as you can see, there I am, I like to dress up as Ollie. But the students actually and staff voted on the name "Ollie." What we did is each class came up with two names, and then we had a bracket form, and then the kids and staff voted on it to the final two, and the ultimate name is "Ollie." So Ollie was present. I come out every once, Ollie comes out every once in a while to say hello to the kids. And they, they love it. They absolutely love it. So it's a nice addition to South Grafton Elementary School. Again, Julie talked a little bit about this, about the PBIS. What our teams are doing right now, this was actually at our last staff meeting, they were actually collaborating and giving us input. We had, we come up with a matrix, again, with be safe, be kind, and be responsible, of different language to have at South Grafton Elementary School. But what Julie and I want, didn't want to happen is that our team just do the lesson plans for them. We wanted to collaborate with them and get their input, so that's what they're doing right now. It's our goal to have this up and running by September. Right now, we're still in the, you know, planning stages. We just didn't want to start it without it to be, you know, fully complete. So the staff is working on that right now to be starting in September of this coming year. Some of the curriculum highlights, again, as Julie Ann said, we have Hegarty at the preschool level. I've been in the preschool when they're doing it, and the kids are absolutely hysterical trying, you know, doing this with their hand movements. And then the Star, Renaissance STAR reading and math. What I've seen during some grade-level common planning time is that they're looking at the different skills that the kids have areas of strength on and areas of opportunities for improvement. And today, we actually had some math PD where they're actually talking about that and tying it in to the Envisions program, where they can then, you know, expand upon the math if they need to, or if, you know, a majority of the kids are having, you know, success, like 99%, they can say, "Okay, you know what, we don't really need to retouch on this. We now need to, we need to backtrack and retouch on other skill areas." So I've used this in the past districts, and it does really coincide with skill set. And as the kids get older, in terms of MCAS and things like that. So it's definitely a great resource to have here at Grafton Elementary. I mean, at Grafton Schools. And then again, some of the things that I said, that we're trying to do some community building. We had our Oktoberfest back again this year in October. It was a huge success. I couldn't believe how many people showed up for this event. We worked from 7:00 in the morning until 6:00 at night. It was, you know, outstanding. We greeted the kids back in September with confetti cannons, and they were absolutely so happy about that. We actually instituted our first annual Global Play Day. North and South did Global Play Day, which was in February. Actually, it was nice. It was on the half-day in February. So in the morning, all the kids, all the teachers, they played games all morning, which actually worked on... Kids didn't know how to play Candy Land. They didn't know how to play Chutes and Ladders. So they learned about turn-taking, about, you know, talking to each other. And then that's just me with Pie Face, me and one of my paraprofessionals down at the library at South. You can all look down. We had a competition with Pie Face, and just to end the day. It was, it was a really great event. Both the teachers and the kids, they loved it, so it was, it was nice to see. We started our first annual Community Reading Day at South Grafton Elementary School in March, where community members came in to read to the students during Read Across America Week. We had our Curriculum Night, which was our first curriculum night that was actually a scavenger hunt for specialists, where the parents came in and they had to do a scavenger hunt instead of the specialists just talking about, you know, their curriculum. They actually had to be part of their curriculum, and the parents really enjoyed that as well. We had our 100th Day of School celebration, and then you really can't see it, but we had a glow stick party where all the kids came into the gym as, again, we just started back our assemblies once a month at South Grafton after COVID, and that's just right before February vacation, we had a glow stick party to kind of end, to end the week before vacation. So it's been a fantastic year, and I'm very excited to end the year with more activities with the students and really seeing, seeing how they've grown from September to June. So thank you.
Thank you. Amazing things. You know, now that you have an owl for a mascot, you're gonna be getting a bunch of owl gifts all the time.
If you come into my office, this owl's everywhere. Actually, my owl, my office is, it's a forest theme, so I was with the owl, so...
Good, you're prepared. That's great. Any questions from the committee? Any questions from the committee?
Yeah, it's okay. You can go first. Okay, Flora?
Okay.
I always miss you because I turn my head this way first.
Well, I knew Rosyela Heather.
This time you get to go first.
Whatever. It's fine. I really, Melissa, I wanted to welcome you and I absolutely love what you said, what your first year priorities were. I think that's the most important thing coming in after someone who'd been there for so long is building that relationship with staff and the community. And I think that's great. It's just wonderful to see the collaboration between both of you and welcome to Grafton. I actually didn't really have any questions. You both did pretty well on explaining what was going on. I'm really glad. I did a quick Google search on the Freckle, which I think is, sounds great. We get a lot of comments from parents on how they can be challenging their students and how to differentiate. And this is such a good answer. So thank you both. I'm excited to see more from both of you.
The kids are truly liking Freckle. They, they are, they were, the teachers were talking about that today during their PD.
And they really just started accessing it about two weeks ago. So it's, it's pretty fresh.
Yeah.
My question was answered. I had some questions about PBIS, but it looks like, I was just wondering about how you're defining each, be safe, be responsible. I just wonder, but I think.
Yeah. So the way that you define them is across every aspect of the day. So literally like, what does it mean to be safe in the bathroom versus safe in the cafeteria?
Yeah, that's what I was just wondering. Yeah.
And then how we're going to teach it is in, I don't know about North, but I think in the passport type. So one person's going to be teaching the skill to everybody, so the same language and the same message. And it's going to be someone who's on our team that's been trained to do that. We'll probably do it three times a year and then have the teachers take ownership of it if they need to just address their class.
And will you be utilizing that as a way to monitor and make sure kids are learning? And then form groups depending on tier two supports?
I think it'll give us a lot of information around tier two supports. So we're, are, we're supposed to be doing a training on the, the data collection system that comes along with it. And it's interesting because PBIS, you often hear more about at older elementary slash middle schools because they're looking at trying to decrease office referrals and significant behavior. Our little people, certainly, we have behavior. It's not, that's not, it's not that it's not a thing, but it's, it looks a lot different. So we're looking at more of trying to provide a very consistent atmosphere for how to learn these skills. What is expected? So that when they do transition up to North Street or to Millbury Street, they're all on the same page. And everyone has the same clear understanding of what those expectations are. But the information that we get around data for when we do have, you know, different things will help us when we go to SST to say, okay, this student has come up in our, you know, in our PBIS system three or four times in the last month. You know, what does that mean? Like where, like, we didn't see this kid in kindergarten, but now we are in first grade. What do we want to do with that? And will help us determine what other supports they might need.
That's, yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Any other questions? My only question is, I was just wondering if there were any challenges or needs that were, that are top of your mind right now, whether it's resources or human resources or otherwise?
For me, no. I tell this to Jay all the time. I feel so much support here with that. It's, it's unbelievable. This school district does a great job supporting both the administrators and the staff. And I want to thank you, the community members, the taxpayers, and Jay, Central Office. I've been in a couple of different school districts, one being my own school district where I live in. And the support that is given to everyone here is remarkable.
Can we get you on the road saying?
I, I tell my staff, I tell my staff that too, so I'm not saying anything I tell my staff. And it's because someone coming from, you know, from.
I love your answer. Julie?
I wasn't going to put her on the spot.
Every time I present a school committee, no, we are very well, we are very well supported. We've worked together, I think, to talk about the need for the kindergarten pairs for a while. And they're here and it's working very well for us. Similarly, like in the past, interventionists came up. We've always been able to work with school, you know, school committee and Jay, you know, around the needs that we have. And at this point, you know, I think we're in really good shape and.
The real answer is she wants shades for her classrooms.
The teachers would love shades.
That's the real thing she wants. I don't know if we can swing it, but I'm trying. That's the reality.
We're very fortunate here in Grafton.
Side of the shades.
It gets hot.
Or is, just, is it one particular side of the building or just?
It's actually both for different reasons. On one side of the building, you're watching recess. Because there are no shades, so you're constantly watching all the kids, you know, different play. Grade levels come out to play. And on the other side, it is because the sun comes in on that side.
Yeah. Okay.
Thanks for bringing that up, Dr. Cummings.
My pleasure.
All right. Just thought of a question.
I was, I was actually going to point out, I know Oktoberfest was fantastic and it was awesome. I went for the first time in a very long time because my kids have been out of that school for a while. But Fun Fair is coming up.
Fun Fair is coming up, May 20th.
And maybe the PTG can get you some shades.
And I wasn't going to put them on the spot. I made note.
There you go.
I was going to talk to them after the meeting.
Watch them put sunglasses on the windows. That's it.
I will say that Oktoberfest, the food trucks were the best thing ever, the food trucks.
It's a good event.
Super fun day.
Get them started. Dr. Cummings being in the dunk tank on May 20th.
It's always great.
I have a video you can use. In October, it's a little bit dicier.
It was warm out that day.
You've had Fun Fair and the cold and rain. May is unpredictable.
It is unpredictable.
And that water is chilly. There's no heaters tied to those things.
A long day.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Good to have you.
We can sponsor the shades. Sponsored by Laura Ofton.
Yeah?
What, the Dunk Tank?
No, the shades.
Oh.
Sponsored by the Ofton family.
It's on camera now.
You're going to get little, little plaques on.
Each one. Like each donate. I wonder how much they are.
Maybe we could have family donations. I'm thinking Fun Fair, you know, families donate one.
I could have my photo on the shades.
I know. I went through that when I tried to buy a carpet.
Maybe like my kids when they were in that school.
Like it had to be a special carpet with fire retardant stuff. I had no idea.
All right. Next up, we have the Teaching and Learning Report. Hi, Tracy.
Would you like me to introduce myself?
Sure. For the record, please.
So I'm Tracy Kaloe. I'm the Director of Teaching and Learning for the Secondary Schools. And I am super excited to tell you about the outstanding work happening at the middle school and the high school. And I'm going to start with an overview. So our focus this year really has been on removing barriers to student learning. And we have been doing that in three distinct ways. The first way is we've been looking at equity in our curriculum. We've been in looking at instructional design through Universal Design for Learning. And we've been looking at the STAR data and the potential need to differentiate instruction. I'm going to start with equity because you all might remember, last spring, I was here with Jocelyn Facet, who is the Department Head of the Social Studies Department at the high school. And Jocelyn and I were speaking to some gaps we felt, we saw, we sensed in the curriculum in terms of equity. So Jocelyn and I decided that really what we needed to look to do was to include the narratives of people from diverse racial, ethnic, religious, and cultural backgrounds in the curriculum and make sure that we were disrupting any deficit-focused narratives. So that's a kind of a tall order. So what we decided to do is a book study over the summer. And this is just four of eight or nine books that were read. Essentially, how this worked is every social studies teacher picked a book of their choice to read. And throughout this year, during the department meetings, the goal was for each member to present their understanding of diverse voices to build everyone's collective knowledge as well as kind of speak to any curriculum decisions we could make as a result of that book study. And I thought it would be kind of neat for you to see some of the end outcomes. So I'm going to start with Eric Wormal, who read Clint Smith's How the Word is Past. You guys might be familiar with that book. It's a very popular book. It is about the history of slavery across America. And the essential question really that, that Smith wants to answer in that text is, how do you tell a story that has been told the wrong way for so long? And Eric's takeaways, I think, are pretty important. He spoke to the fact that teaching history that is full and honest is going to be uncomfortable for teachers and potentially students, but it's necessary to inform ourselves and our students of our past and how we as a society can move forward positively. He talked a lot about how teaching uncomfortable history has to be done with grace and kindness. I thought that was excellent. And then we're meeting students where they are in this knowledge and that teaching the stories that Clint shares in How the Word is Past is really teaching all of American history. Jason Jennings read The Warmth of Other Suns by Isabel Wilkerson, which is a fantastic book about the Great Migration. His takeaways were very insightful. He talked a lot about, in our current curriculum, we speak a lot of the freedom seekers. We speak that people are coming, that groups were coming to America to seek freedom. So the Puritans were fleeing persecution. The European immigrants were fleeing famine and class systems. Asian immigrants were looking to get away from economic turmoil. And then what he realized is, when we talk about Africans, we talk about that we enslaved them and they became property. And what we didn't talk about, and we're going to start now, is that they too are freedom seekers. Through the Great Migration, Black Americans were fleeing the racism and inequality in the South, looking for equal rights and a political voice and the American dream, much like the other groups that we currently teach about. Elizabeth Perry took a very interesting perspective. She read about the Latin American leader Bolivar. And the reason she chose Bolivar, I thought, was pretty cool. She said to me that Latin American nationalism really mirrors ours. And she thought it would be a great opportunity for students to learn about Latin America and make some really, make some critical judgments in terms of synthesis and understanding how those two nations come to develop some nationalism. So what you can see I did here is I just gave you a piece of the curriculum she's already started to change. So she's using a Venn diagram to ask students to compare South America's experience to one of the following, the French Revolution, the American Revolution, or the German Unification. And I've also decided to highlight what Hannah Ducharme did in terms of her book study. She read a book called What If I Say the Wrong Thing? And I'm really glad she picked that book because I think when, I think all of us, whether we're teachers or just in a, in a conversation, we're always afraid we're going to offend. We don't want to do that. And so I, I really love that Hannah picked this book because I think when she reported out on it, it really made the department feel much better. And one of the things that she talked a lot about is this quote from the book. Just because you are a good, well-meaning person doesn't mean that you know how to be respectful in every situation. And with that knowledge in mind, what are the takeaways from that reading? And she talks a lot about how you can't assume, you have to ask, incorporating UDL strategies around creating a welcoming environment and not being afraid to make a mistake. So their work has been outstanding. I've been very impressed with it and I've learned quite a bit. And I'm very proud of the work they did. With that being said, we also started to look at equity in the English curriculum. So I want to start really first with the goals of literacy instruction. So essentially, when we have students study literature, we're looking for them to develop a better understanding of themselves and others, their identity. We're looking for students to increase their cognition, increase their academic vocabulary and content, and their criticality, which is their ability to explore power, equity, and oppression. Now, when Karen Mealy and I sat down and talked about these literacy goals, we really felt that the place where there was a gap in our curriculum was with the criticality pieces. How do we expose more kids to ideas around power and equity? And so Karen and I read a book over the summer called Letting Go of Literary Whiteness that we felt really did a fantastic job of getting to the criticality piece. So we brought it to the sophomore English team. And that team is Bridgette McClemmets, who is the special ed teacher. Abby Gerard is pictured. Beth Lambert, you can see her pretty red sweater. And Jen Pelletier unfortunately was absent that day. But that's the sophomore team. And we brought aspects of that text to them and asked them to read it. And when we got together, we decided that it was, you know, through the unit of To Kill a Mockingbird, it was a good way to start raising awareness and helping students formulate their own conclusions through discussion and reflection. One of the things that the author of Letting Go of Literary Whiteness does very well is she has fantastic discussion questions that really encourage students to kind of think deeply about the, about the text in the sense of power and oppression and equity. And I gave you one of the examples here. Are there aspects of the text that you find unfamiliar or challenging? What might those aspects reveal about your own perspectives? So what I really love about the heart of these questions is they are really helping students come to their own conclusions using the text as a basis. We are also looking at removing barriers through instructional design. So PD this year for the middle school and the high school has been focused on Universal Design for Learning. And I'm going to define that, although it's kind of a massive educational framework, I'm going to call it down to one sentence. Universal Design for Learning is a framework in which teachers offer flexibility for students to access information, process that information, and demonstrate their understanding of that information. So I'm going to use this graphic to help you understand. So equality in education simply means we are providing similar resources. As you can see from that picture, similar resources don't necessarily remove barriers to learning. For some of us, there would still be a barrier. So we then move to equity. And what we know with equity is we all don't, we don't begin at the same starting place. And so we might need to make some adjustments. And even with those adjustments, although we get to a more of a level playing field, there still may be a barrier to learning. So the intention of UDL is simply just to embed in the curriculum this flexibility so that there is no barrier to learning. And when you look at UDL, it really is three components. It looks at means of representation, which is really just a fancy way of saying, how do teachers present information to students? The second aspect is means of expression, which is another way of saying, how do students demonstrate their understanding? And the last way is means of engagement. And that gets into SEL components that we've covered as a district initiative a couple of years ago and having kind of this welcoming environment. Kevin and Roseanne felt, and I did too, based on certain experiences last year, that we should start with multiple means of representation. And so what I did in the fall is I did a workshop for the high school and the middle school in which we focused on developing their understanding of multiple means of representation and the strategies they could employ in the classroom to make sure that we were getting at a variety of learners. So as you can see, what I did first, because I am the teacher, is I modeled. So you can see on the right is an aspect of their homework assignment. This is what teachers had to do prior to coming into my workshop. And you can see here what I did is I modeled different ways to access the information. So typically, when we were going to school, we were typically told to read. But with UDL, we want to make sure there's no barriers to learning because some students don't read well or they don't prefer to read. They might do better as an auditory learner, so they might do better with a podcast. Many students in today's day and age prefer videos. So in order to have a flexibility in access, I helped teachers understand that I wanted them to learn about multiple means of representation, but they could pick how? They could pick the video, they could pick the podcast, or they could pick a reading. And from there, you can now see there is a table of high school teachers using Legos. What I had them do is I had them decide how they wanted to process their understanding. And I gave them various options. They could create a visual, they could create a concept map, they could write a reflection. Or, as you can see with this table, they could use Legos to build their understanding of the content. So within that workshop, we came away with an understanding of what multiple means of representation is and the strategies to employ it in a classroom. And that really kicked off the heart of PD this year. PD was a little bit different than what we've done in the past because teachers actually engaged in pilots. What they were asked to do is to choose, they were, first they were asked to do is to reflect on their practice based on what they've learned about multiple means of representation. I asked them to think about, what are they doing well and what might they need to work on? And there was kind of a method to my madness around that because when they were able to surface what they needed to work on, I was then able to get them to think about what do they want to try in the classroom in their pilots. So what they did is they chose a strategy, they put it into play in the classroom, and then they reflected on the impact. And so I'm going to highlight many of the things that teachers decided to do. Many teachers, and you're going to see this when I report out on, on some of the big takeaways, did a lot around options for perception. Many teachers came up with alternatives for auditory information, alternatives for visual information. Many of them came up with ways to clarify vocabulary and symbols, typically through visuals, how to illustrate information through multiple media points. So we're looking at podcasts, we're looking at videos, we're looking at memes in one classroom. And then others took a look at supplying background knowledge and activating prior knowledge and guiding information processing. So to summarize, so I want to make sure you understand what you're going to see next. Every teacher chose one of those aspects to try in their classroom and then report out on the. and then report out on the impact on student learning. Okay? Questions on that before I go? Because I'm going to start giving you the end outcome.
I have one question.
Go ahead.
Anybody else? Go first, though.
Okay. My only question is, when you were presenting this to the teachers, the multiple means of representation, was there any pushback from teachers who thought, okay, you're going to triple our work now to have to come up with all these different?
So.
What was your response to that?
That's a great question.
Yeah.
And it's a valid question. And it's also a valid response because time is always of the essence. So what I, what I did in that workshop is I connected multiple means of representation to the learning sciences, to cognitive science and how we learn. So they understood that, why they were doing it. So I could, I could tie the idea of supplying background knowledge and activating prior knowledge to the learning sciences around why that is critical to learning. Because if you don't do it, you don't retain it. And so that builds a sense of urgency around it that otherwise would not be there. I think they found the pilots manageable because there was a fair amount of choice embedded in them. It was very much connected to their practice. And it was absolutely risk-free. I made it perfectly clear that it could absolutely bomb and that would be fine. I just wanted them to try it. Okay?
Yep. Thanks.
Okay. So now I'm going to report out on some takeaways that I thought you might find interesting. So Nicole Brough is a science teacher at the high school. She was looking at options for information processing. And she loved the idea of the Legos. So what she had her students do is they built Play-Doh models of the skin. So as opposed to just completing a graphic like they normally would, just filling in the parts, she had them take Play-Doh and actually create the different levels of skin with Play-Doh. She said they loved it, it was the best engagement she's ever seen. Nancy Miranda was looking for, offering alternatives for reading comprehension as opposed to reading something and answering questions. Nancy used graffiti boards, which are really looking at a visual representation of a novel so that they are taking what they've come to understand and they're representing it visually so that it becomes better to understand and easier to remember. Kaylee Murphy loved the idea of illustrating content through multiple media. She liked the idea of having students read, watch, and listen. So she had a unit, I love this unit. She took a unit on the meat packing industry and connected it to the jungle. And instead of simply having them read about the meat inspections, she came up with videos and podcasts as well that they could choose from. Carrie Dunn did an awesome job with activating prior knowledge. What he did here, so activating prior knowledge is an essential option for comprehension. It is really the only way that we understand and retain new information is by connecting it to old. So what he did is he started with a visual, that's actually a fantastic visual of the concept that he was going to be talking about. And he asked them to do almost a notice and wonder of that visual and then say, based, how are your ideas and information presented about this visual connected to what you already know? Tom Gamache had a super idea. Tom teaches AP Stats. And he really took the idea that visuals are an outstanding, so visuals are the easiest thing for us to process and understand. He took that to the next level and he built in the idea of not only supplying memes, but having the students come up with their own memes when it comes to statistical principles. And so by using a meme, what he does is he not only guides information processing, but he really highlights the critical features of the statistics. He said it was great. And he said the kids came up with stuff that was 100 times better than what he found online. Mike Dattle has a fantastic idea, and I just shared this at the middle school during our last PD session. So Mike took the idea of making sure that our new instruction is connected to a visual to the next level. And what he did is, on the test, right underneath the test question, he added the visual that he used to tie the content to. He pulled the, first the students were like, why are there pictures on this test? And then when he talked them through that, he said the response from the students was, it just floored him. He said they were, they said it helped them so much to kind of cue their memory and their tests, their test grades were much better than they have been in the past. So that work is going exceedingly well. The last way in which we're looking at removing barriers to learning is using the STAR data, which you've been hearing a lot about, and the idea of differentiating our instruction. I'm, I'm going to approach it from a little bit of a different perspective maybe than what you've heard about it because I am actually presenting with, to the middle school, high school, middle school and high school English and math departments on the reports and how to use them to inform instruction. How do we take reports and we remediate gaps that they might be showing? Or challenging students that the data might be telling us need to be challenged? And so I've been using what's called the State Standards Mastery Report. And essentially what this is, I want to make sure you can see the colors. So essentially what this, this is actually data from a seventh grade classroom, which is why I have taken the names out. So what you can see here, I am the seventh grade teacher. I have pulled up the State Standards Mastery Report for literature for my class. And I can see how every one of my students performed on the, every, on the Common Core standards in one graphic, in visuals. My students in red, that means that they are just beginning to understand that standard. The students who are, scores are in yellow, are developing their understanding. And the student scores that are in green have a solid or a secure understanding of that standard. So I'm going to ask the committee, if you were the teacher looking at this graph, what would you, what do you see?
See, a big differential.
Speak more about that, Elizabeth.
I feel like I'm in school again.
Well, you see, you see kids who are getting 99s, 100s, who are clearly in the green, all the way down to 29. That's a huge difference.
Okay, so there's a scope. There's a fair, there's a large scope in terms of their ability to meet some of these standards. What else do you see?
I see, I see a bit of a trend. The third column over, whatever that concept is, there's a fair number of students who are either just beginning to understand or, or well on their way, which to me seems like it would be an opportunity to go over that again with the majority of the class. But I can also see opportunities to meet with individual students and create groups.
Okay.
According to those topics. And I think I just answered it wrong.
No, you did not.
You did not. You did not answer it wrong.
I would have paid you to answer it that way.
Yeah.
What?
It's almost like I would have planted you to answer it that way.
Well, we did have that, we did have that exchange, right?
So what you see, right? And I was gonna, I was gonna highlight really, if you, if you didn't give me the right questions, I was scaffolding this and I, excuse me, the right answers. I was scaffolding this and I was going to point your, direct you intentionally to the first column. But Amy, you did a great job of kind of helping all of us understand that what you see here is that teachers are going to have to address learners at different places. So what that's called is differentiating instruction.
Which we've done for ever.
So differentiating instruction in a nutshell, and again, this is like, you know, 10 decades of research I'm going to put into one statement, is when teachers respond to students' instructional needs. And the way the teacher responds is designing the right task for the right student at the right time using data. So the way teachers do this is in two ways. They use flexible grouping and tiered assignments. So flexible grouping is basically, you're going to create instructional groups based on a student's ability to meet a standard. And within those groups, the students are going to do tiered assignments or different assignments based on where they are in achieving that standard. Tiered assignments are assignments that vary by challenge. So let's look at my visual as an anchor. The circle with, I call them game pieces. I don't know what else to call them. But the circle with the game pieces is the class has taken the test. And then you can see that we have five different grouped colors of pieces, correct? So how this represents differentiation beautifully is once those students took that test, we saw that some students fell in with, were in the purple group, meaning they performed a certain way when it came to that standard. Some students were in the red, meaning they performed a different way. And some students were in the blue. And they, they also performed a different way. So I know that I have to put those students in the blue, red, and purple in a group together. And I have to give them an activity that is appropriate to their understanding of the standard. And I'm going to give you a model because that's a lot of information. So I'm an English teacher again. And I'm going to teach a unit on, I'm going to do Their Eyes Were Watching God. And I know that in order for students to be successful with my unit on Their Eyes Were Watching God, they would have to, and you see my red arrow? They'd have to be able to cite pieces of textual evidence to support an analysis of the text. If they can't do that, they will not be able to understand the big ideas in Their Eyes Were Watching God. So I'm going to look through that column and I'm going to say to myself, okay, who doesn't have that skill? Who's beginning? Who's developing and who's exceeded it? Because I'm going to need to rectify those who are just beginning. I'm going to need to give practice to those who are developing. And those who are in green, who are beyond it, I'm going to have to really challenge them. So I'm going to have to make three groups with three different activities. And how that would look is as follows. The red group, that is just beginning to understand that skill, would work with me in a teacher-directed group. And what I would do is I'd go back to the beginning because they're just beginning their understanding. And I would teach, how do you cite evidence to support an inference using a short story or a picture? So the complexity is simple, so we can focus on the skill. The students who are yellow, meaning they're developing an understanding, they would go into a group and they would work collaboratively. And I would give them a more complex reading. And I would ask them to basically practice because that's the place they're in, drawing inferences and citing evidence to support it. The kids who are in green, we know they're very, very comfortable with that skill. So I would push them to a higher cognitive level in their activity. They would do something that would require something like evaluation or creation. They would be at the top of the thinking skills. So if I were going to teach this class and I was going to have an extension group, I would put them together. And I'd ask them to design a lesson on citing text evidence for elementary students. So while I was working with the skill gap, the other two groups would be working to either practice or extend. And that's how teachers differentiate instruction, based on the STAR data. So by the end of our workshops together, Kevin and Roseanne have been kind enough to release each department to work with me for a half day. They get about 45 minutes to work with their co-planning team to take a look at, so a co-planning team in ninth grade might be five teachers. They're looking at their Standards Mastery Report as a whole. And they're looking to see if there are any commonalities in skill gaps. And then what they're doing together is they're creating a differentiated lesson. The English department has already started. Anthony Morando had me in last, yesterday to see a differentiated lesson based on the complexity of characters and illusion. So that the work is, this is, this is timely. This is difficult work in the sense that it's, it's very time-consuming. It's not hard to do, but it requires time to really think about the standards and how you can differentiate how students apply and practice those skills. And they're doing an outstanding job. In the works, right now, in addition to all of this, both Kevin and Roseanne would like me to move on next year and cover multiple means of expression. Which means we would, and both principals would like to continue with the pilots so it would roll out the same way. I will come in in the fall with a workshop. We'll talk about what does multiple means of expression mean? And what actual strategies can they use in the classroom? And then they will go through pilots. In addition to that, bless you. World Language is looking at brand-new frameworks. They are, the nice thing is the state really hasn't put a tight timeline around the adoption. So they are taking the time they need to really look at the new components and start building that into their curriculum. And I'm pretty excited about this work with social studies writing. You may recall, at the end of last year, we had vertically aligned in grade six through 12 the writing skills for argumentative, informative, and narrative writing. I am taking that vertical alignment now to social studies and saying to the social studies teachers, okay, this is what they're learning. We're going to have you do the same exact thing, just with social studies content. And so we're kind of moving, it's becoming like a writing across the curriculum now. So that's what social studies is going to start working on. I'm starting with the middle school now. Chances are good I'll start with the high school in the beginning of next year. And with that, I can take questions.
Thank you. Questions from the committee?
I need to take a breath, I think.
That stuff's fascinating.
Question?
Laura?
Thank you. Thank you so much, Tracy. This was really interesting. A lot of work is going on and looking wonderful. I wanted to go all the way back to the social studies. So has this been implemented yet? Or are they still, okay. How has the reaction been? How has the learning been?
So I'm going to, I'm going to go back. Pieces have been implemented.
Okay.
So Elizabeth went right ahead and changed several of her units. My understanding is Jason and, so what, what they're doing now is they're going to move into co-planning teams. And based on what they've learned, they're going to change the curriculum. So when Jason works with his co-planning team, they are now going to change, is really changing the message, really. So it's not a deficit-focused narrative. It's more of, they were freedom seekers too, and we should applaud them for that as well. So they're moving into the design as well.
Okay.
Okay?
And then I have another question toward the end of your presentation. I thought at one point you talked about, so when you differentiate, that's terrific. I thought we had moved, not we and Grafton, but education in the whole had kind of moved away from separating out kids. And I thought at one point in your presentation, you talked about grouping some together, that you would group the different colors together. But then the next slide, you talked about how they, they were separated. Can you just go into a little bit more of that?
Sure, so I'm going to use this chart.
Yeah.
So in the first column, the standard is I'm going to cite textual evidence to support analysis of a text. In this case, we would group them separately. And the reason for that is, the students who are in red don't have the skill.
Right.
So if I teach Their Eyes Were Watching God, without re-teaching that skill, they will lose it. It'll be a barrier to their learning. They will not achieve the outcomes of that unit. So in this case, I would separate them. And I would remediate the skill gap. The students in yellow tell me that they're starting to understand, so I'd have them practice. And the students in green have it. They don't need to practice it at all, so I'm going to push them into higher cognitive thinking around it to extend their learning. So while we, we like to keep kids heterogeneously grouped because they learn from each other beautifully, there are times when it comes to the power standards or standards that are necessary to comprehend a unit, that we will have to separate them and make sure they're all starting at the same playing field.
Yeah. Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you for asking that because that was, I was going to ask that same question. If I could just follow up a little bit more on that. So, so what you're saying is, at the right time, in the right circumstances. But it's not something that is going to be, that you're going to be doing, you know, all the time. It's just, it's when, yeah.
Yes. So it would be literally impossible to do this all the time because how many state standards do we have, right?
Right.
And so what the teachers and I have talked about is, I really only want them to focus on rectifying gaps that impact a power standard in their curriculum or their ability to do the next unit and leave the rest alone.
Okay.
Right? Because that, that's the focus. Like, we want to make sure they're learning what we need them to learn. You don't have to worry about things that don't impact the curriculum. Some kids might test like in sixth grade on something that has nothing to do with, it might be a reading fluency issue, for example. That, that's going to have very little to do[1723.14] That, that's going to have very little to do with some of the end outcomes of a novel like Their Eyes Were Watching God, if that makes sense. So they're only going to rectify those standards that are going to impact their ability to understand the unit.
So is it, is the idea that would they have, this is getting into the particulars, but would there be graded assignments that they'd be working on and have different things? Or it's just, it's the activity, it's the learning?
It's the learning.
It's the exercise?
Yes.
Okay.
It is not graded.
And it will be obviously conveyed to the kids so that there's no, you know, that they're not observing that, oh, these kids are going here. And these kids are, you know, that they'll, they're not going to be
No, oh, no, no.
Comparing themselves to one another.
Oh, no, no.
Figuring out who's in what group.
Very common, right? Working collaboratively is a very common instructional strategy at the high school. So it's not going to be unusual. Like Anthony Morando got up and said, we're, we're working in groups today. I want this group over here, this group over here, and this group's coming with me. You know, that's literally how it rolls out.
Okay. Perfect.
Any other questions?
For once, I have no questions.
Such a thorough presentation, really.
I also read it ahead of time, so I kind of knew it was coming.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Great to see you. Great work. Thank you.
I don't know what that is.
We have a lot to talk about tonight, so I'm just going to keep things moving. Next, we have on the agenda the Police and School Department memorandum of understanding, if I can speak to it. As I think you've all read the document, so you probably already know this, but this is a memorandum of understanding that that sets out the relationship between the school resource officer and the school via the superintendent. It's not something that we sign, but we vote on it tonight whether we want to endorse it and present it to Jay to sign sort of on our behalf, so. Did you have anything else?
That's a perfect summary. We need it approved officially by the school committee, if you're so willing. Because now they're, they're starting to put out more and more grants related to safety and security. I think I mentioned in a weekly memo not too long ago, I applied for a couple within the last four weeks. And now the state, with their grants around those two topic areas, are requiring an approved MOU. We've had an MOU for years. The chief's done a fantastic job. Anytime there's new language, he, we update it, but all thanks to him. But it, it definitely helps. It outlines the expectations, the working partnership, the communication, et cetera.
So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve this?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm moved to approve the 2023 School Resource Officer Memorandum of Understanding as presented.
Motion for? Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? See none. All those in favor? We have four. Thank you. All right. So I guess we don't have to do anything. You're going to sign. You'll sign that and present it. Okay.
Good to go.
Next up is school choice for the 2023-2024 school year.
Yep. Annually, the school committee is asked to consider continuing their participation in the school choice program for the following year. I'm asking that the committee vote to continue our participation next year. As usual, we would plan on opening five to ten seats in the, at the kindergarten level and fill other seats as they become available during the school year. And I just threw together the totals of what we have for school choice right now in district.
So I will also entertain a motion to approve school choice for the 2023-2024 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
I just have one question.
Yes.
So this is what we have right now.
Correct.
You're proposing to add more so that grade twelve, the ten would come off? And you're going to add?
Correct. Everybody would move up. And then if we didn't move forward with choice, we'd have kindergarten would have a zero.
So we're not, I guess what I'm trying to get a sense of how many seats at each grade level would be newly opened?
The only new ones would be the kindergarten seats.
Okay, that's what I.
That's it.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. That's what I thought, but I just wanted to confirm.
Any other questions? Comments? Discussion? See none. All those in favor? We have four. All right. Approved. Thank you.
All right.
All right. Next on our agenda was the Universal Free Meals Action Discussion. We are skipping over this tonight. Laura, do you have, do you want to explain why?
I had brought this up. There was a couple of bills in the House and the Senate on this. I wrote, both of our rep, our representative and our senator was, were supporting them anyway. I had written some letters for us, kind of just saying thank you to them. It's passed. It's moving on. No need to. I mean, you can still thank them, but I don't think we need to send them an official letter. I think it's great.
And we were ahead of this. Laura was ahead of this.
I was on it.
But given, given this, it was on our agenda on the February twenty-eighth meeting that was canceled. And then again, the March fourteenth meeting that was canceled, so.
It's all good.
Laura was on top of it, but the weather didn't cooperate, but it passed anyway, so.
They were fearing our weather. They were already sponsoring, so it was, it was nice to see. I'm really happy that hopefully that this is moving forward. So it's a good thing for the students in Massachusetts.
Yep. Very good. Thank you. And thank you for your efforts too.
Yeah, no, thank you. Thanks for moving on though.
All right. Superintendent Report?
I just had a few things. The, a bunch of these pieces are from weeks ago. But I did want to mention that our winter athletics went exceptionally well. Boys and girls basketball made the state tournament. Hockey went all the way to the semifinals, which was great. And then Aditya Kaki and Jackson Shea did tremendous work in track. Aditya broke the school record for the fifty meters. And Jackson Shea set a new record for the high jump. So just a nice, nice job all around. I've, I think I shared with you in writing the information about the grants that, the grants that we've applied for. As I mentioned just a few minutes ago, most, the state is starting to put out more around safety and security. We, in particular, are focusing on, or what we qualify for, our new audio systems in the schools. In particular, we need new systems at North Grafton Elementary School and North Street Elementary School so that you could make announcements, you can connect with classrooms, be heard in the cafeteria if you had to make an announcement. So we've got our fingers crossed on, on those. But that would include full new systems at both schools. That would be fantastic. We, I think Monday, which was yesterday, I think we ran the GMS bullying survey. As you may recall, it seems like ages ago, I went through the data that we received from the metro, from the Worcester Health Alliance survey. We had some concerns with the data that was related to GMS, in particular bullying. So we created a more in-depth version. All students will take that. We're going to get those results and then have focus groups to dive into whatever those findings are. And I'll, I'll share them with you. But I'm excited about that. You generally get, or typically get more in-depth, meaningful information from the focus groups as opposed to just an anonymous survey.
Are you talking about staff focus groups or?
No, with students.
With students?
Yeah, we, myself, Kristen Gasper, we've got an outside person we've been working with. We'll meet with small groups and just have, just get a better understanding. So we're looking forward to it. Equity audit, this seems also like it went out ages ago. But the group that's doing the townwide equity audit contacted us through our communication system. We put out access to different surveys. They received feedback from parents, some targeted students, and all staff were included. So we haven't seen the results of that, but we, we should be seeing or hearing something soon. And lastly, I wanted to touch on the gain program. It's really getting steam. These pictures seem, seem ancient. But we've obviously moved in. These were, the kids went on a massive shopping spree for all the pots, pans, all that stuff. They did a wonderful job. We had a CPAC meeting there. It was probably, it was probably four weeks ago now, maybe three weeks ago, and they loved it. And you, it's awesome. This is the, the school side of things. And this is our school side kitchen area that you're seeing here. There's an office off of this. I should have taken more photos. A bathroom in the back, an area where the kids can relax, play video games, and just kind of chill out. And obviously, the other half of the building where the space is dedicated to the kitchen area and then the shop. Chuck Brown of Bread Guy Breads has done a soft opening. And we don't have a date yet, but in the next few weeks, we'll have a more celebratory opening with a ribbon and all that good stuff. But it's gone. We had super high expectations and so far it's exceeded those. So it's been wonderful. And I think that's all I have. Yep. May I take any questions?
Any questions?
Where's our bread?
I went there.
Did you go?
Yeah.
And was it open?
Uh, with, yeah. I mean, I live like literally like down the street. So we went on Saturday.
Nice.
Seven AM.
Wow.
Mm-hmm.
Was there a line?
That's awesome.
Yes.
That's great.
Yeah.
I thought it already was sold out by like eight or nine.
Yeah, we got up thinking that, oh, we'll be fine. And then we get there, like, whoa, there's a line, so.
I love to hear that. That, that's great.
I know he's looking for volunteers to help, especially, he's focusing on retirees. He said, any retirees?
He's out there, who? Was it?
No.
So there was.
The front.
Yeah, they were working the front.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's Kathy was there.
Kathy and Donna.
And Donna.
Kathy from, and Donna from Apple.
I saw Kathy.
Formerly of Apple Tree Arts.
And that's without, I don't think they're doing a lot of advertising. We haven't obviously done the Kid Connection and then advertised that. We've got students at the high school working with Chuck doing internships. And they're going to be doing a lot of the marketing, the online stuff, so. It's awesome. We finally have our.
Quickly. I know it seemed like it was taking forever, but it was like, not even this time last year, you brought this idea. And the fact that it happened like this, I think is, is amazing. And it's just so, because a lot of times you hear the idea and you're like, yeah, okay. And like, here it is. Like, it's very exciting.
It is. The kids are super excited.
Phenomenal.
Yeah, I did hear that some of the kids had helped with the bread over the, like, the week. I think it's open. He's, he's opening like during the week too, so.
Yeah, he's open, but.
Brandon's going to be running the show in no time. He's a, he's a force, that one. So it's awesome.
I had one question, and I just, it's probably just me. I just can't remember what happened with this. But the secure, just thinking about NGS, they were here and security. The doors at NGS, have those already been updated? Or what's the, what's the status on those? I know there was an issue with the doors because they're easily.
Oh.
Remember, they were being held open? There was, we were going to improve the, the, the scan-in system so that teachers didn't have to prop them open and they could let themselves in properly.
Correct. I can follow up on that tomorrow. It was, I know they're all wired. The issue was we didn't have the swipe, we have the swipe access for staff at the front of the building. But, and that's great.
Yeah, yeah.
But in the back of the building, when they're going in and out to recess, we didn't have a swipe access point. So I know I'm positive at all schools, we did anything like that, we've already got it wired. There was a backlog, I guess, I'm assuming it was due to COVID. But we've been waiting months for the actual swipe units. We have just gone basically old-school in the meantime. And they, it might be there. I know at the middle school, I noticed yesterday when I was there, one in the back was wired, but the unit wasn't there. So I'm guessing they come at once. But in the meantime, we came up with a system of just using hard, like, old-fashioned keys to get in and out. It's not super convenient, but it works and it's better than a brick.
Putting a mop in the way, yeah.
Yep.
Good. Glad to hear that.
We worked very closely, just tying back to the MOU and talking about security. You may have heard there were, about two weeks ago, we had in the state at least a dozen, maybe fifteen swatting calls that went to, they actually weren't placed to the schools. They, the call, they were all entirely fake, but they would go to the police department and they'd say there's a shooting at one of the schools, which would trigger a response, obviously panic, et cetera. Then it stopped for about two weeks, but then it started up again today. There were at least, there were at least ten by eleven o'clock. But with that MOU and just a strong partnership, I talked with the chief, talked with the SRO, communicated with all of our building principals, communicated with the entire staff, just to be as prepared as possible if that does happen, but.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
I'm just going to keep going. We, I have a student representative report tonight, so skip over that. Future agenda schedule planning? Any comments on what we have coming up? And I did have one item I wanted to discuss. As you know, we've gotten our proposal to meet with Senator Moore on April eleventh. I think, I'm not sure if that's been, if six o'clock has been confirmed. But I've asked Colleen, the chair of the Select Board, to see if six o'clock would work instead of seven o'clock. But I wondered what the rest of the committee thought about that. We do have a student advisory council meeting at six o'clock. So we could, a couple of options, we could cancel that meeting. I imagine students with all they have going on probably wouldn't be too terribly disappointed. But I would also hate to miss an opportunity to hear from them. We do have another meeting with them in June before the end of the year. Or we could split up, send a couple of, you know, we don't all have to be at the, at the SAC meeting either. Split up and, and make some attendance at the, the meeting with Senator Moore. I just wondered what people thought about that. If we had any thoughts. We can, yeah.
I mean, I thought, I think splitting up would be fine. They, I mean, they did such a good job, I thought. Finance Committee, Select Board, I mean, just, I was so proud. It felt like for the first time that we were all together. And there was not one comment about the schools overspending or not understanding. There was a great understanding. Questions that the Finance Committee asked, they were so, they were great. Like, I didn't feel like, you know, I mean, of course, there were times when, because I just like to talk. But, you know, I didn't feel like we were so necessarily needed. I do think Jay or Anita should be there for sure, or both. But I think if two of us are there, we're there, you know, and Amy stays with that, or whatever, you know, we split up, I think would be fine. I mean, we had poor attendance at our last SAC, but I hate to cancel on them just because it looks, you know, I want them to know that we're here and whatever, and hopefully, you know. But I can understand if people think we can, we're meeting with them again too, it's fine.
Yeah, I was just proposing a couple of options.
I didn't even think about that, that we could cancel. But I think we can, I mean, I don't think we all.
Probably split.
How are they, how are they reminded of the meetings? Last, last meeting, I think we had like three or four, right?
They get email reminders.
They get email reminders?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I, I agree with. They do, but I will do it earlier and. That could answer our question, right? Yeah, if, if, yeah, we can't get a lot, but I agree with Laura. I think, I personally feel strongly that there should be members of the school committee in the room to show support, you know. And if, you know, I was watching from home, I had nothing to say. I thought, I agree with Laura, they did a great job. It wasn't, it wasn't, there's no animosity between the boards or with Representative Meridian, which is good to see. And I want to see the same thing happen for Senator Moore. And if the six o'clock doesn't work for him, because as far as I'm aware, that question has not been answered.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's been confirmed.
I would propose that we just delay the start of our meeting the way the Select Board has done. So if it's going to be seven, top of the agenda, we do the same thing. Just delay ours till.
Seven thirty.
I would say seven forty-five because we have to move. We have to get up here and.
Yeah, we have to go upstairs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just in case that one goes a little bit later, because it's going to be further along in the process by then. Too, so there might be different, it might be a completely different type of meeting.
Might have more to say.
So.
That's a good thought. Yeah, I do think, I mean, I definitely think it's important that people are there, I don't, you know, for sure, so.
Okay. All right, so let's, I guess it's, it's also pending the time question, so. But I think I have the, do you have anything?
Yeah, no.
To what people already said. So, thank you. I will take that and we'll, we'll figure it out and, and let everyone know and.
Thanks.
Um, we'll put an agenda on the, on the books.
And worst case, we can invite him here too. I mean, it doesn't, you know.
We could, but I liked that, I liked the strong showing of having everyone together at the meeting with Representative Meridian.
And it's, it's, it's hard to get, get a date and to get him in. Like, he couldn't make the last one and like, I just feel like it might be, it might be hard, hard pressed to get a date in time from him.
Right, right. Yeah. But I do really want to, I mean, it was like a different world then, you know, when I think of.
And I'm happy to, like, I'm happy to stay and do student advisory council with whoever and, you know. If that's how it goes, I, I don't have to be there. But I think that there should be two members of the committee in the room.
Okay.
Agreed.
All right. Thank you for that. Any other suggestions to the future agenda? As always, you can always email me and we can add things, move things around as well, so.
How did we do catching up? Are we, are we, we're not caught up?
We had a lot on the agenda tonight that we flew through.
Yeah. Oh, are we basically where we need to be, right? Yeah.
Yeah, where we need to be.
Great work.
Okay, so we have a lot of minutes to approve tonight, so. Not hearing any other comments on that, I will move on. We have, as you know, we had a gap in our secretary coverage, which is the reason that we have a meeting from September on here, because she had to catch up. She was working on sort of the more, more recent meetings, and now she's backtracking. And since she's remote, she has to watch the videos of the meetings to catch up. So she is doing a great job doing that and catching up and getting those minutes to us. So we have minutes from September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two, and then February seventh. And then the two, we had to have very brief minutes for the two meetings that got canceled on the twenty-eighth and the fourteenth. So I'll take motions on these individually or as a group or however the committee would like to do that.
Is there any objection to one motion?
No.
No. Nope.
All right. I move the committee approve the minutes of September twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, February seventh, two thousand twenty-three, February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, and February, or March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second. Motion made in second. Any discussions? Any suggestions, edits? They're very thorough. All right, in that case, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we have four, all right.
Great.
Thank you very much. All right, we also have two warrants for tonight, so I will entertain motions for those as well.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Laura.
I motion to approve Graff, uh, Grafton warrant, uh, March ninth, two thousand twenty-three, for a total of eighty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Motion on the floor.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion on this warrant? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Four, all right, thank you. Uh, we have a second warrant for warrant number thirty-seven from March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, in the amount of three hundred and four thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifteen cents.
So moved.
To approve?
Sorry.
To approve, Laura, just to clarify.
Yeah.
Thank you. Motion made in seconded?
Yeah.
Any discussion on this warrant, on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval? Aye, four. All right, thank you. All right, policy. We have one policy to discuss tonight, the Policy JICA, the Student Dress Code, which we are presenting as a first reading. Shall I, or do you want to?
Go ahead.
I haven't done a lot of talking.
All right, I can. Go ahead.
I can, I need to bring it up here for one second. All right, so, this was a policy that, there were a couple of things that we noticed about it. One of them, um, was that it didn't, it only applied to the high school. So, we were looking at whether or not it needed to be applied to the middle schools well. Okay, one second, let me bring it up. Okay. So, um, this was one, we completely replaced this with a MASC policy, correct? That is where we got it. It's been a while now.
No, it actually wasn't an MASC one.
Different school district, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, it's been a while since we met.
So, we looked around, um, for one that we really liked, that was kind of just, you know, a lot of them, they target the girls then, but we want it to be, you know, we also want kids to come to school ready to learn, so there's, there's a challenge with the dress code, I feel like. This one was, um, Oregon National Organization for Women Model Dress Code, and we really liked that, I think we still made some edits, 'cause that's what we do, not a lot. So, we're, we're actually recommending this one, um, and it's not too far from our current dress poli-, dress code policy, so we had talked a lot a few years ago. I'm gonna talk to give you time to put it up, how's that?
Working on it.
So, we, we really revamped it, but the fact that.
I think it was short, the audience can't see it.
Oh, okay.
That, um, that it wasn't at the middle school, and while we were looking at it, let's take a double look at it, and make sure that we're in, uh, just good faith, but we also still wanted teachers to have a little bit of agency in their classroom, like, it's, you know, when I came at this, like, I think a few years ago, I was like, "Yes," you know, we can't, you know, they should wear whatever they want, but then there is kind of a dialing back too, I think, like.
So, this sets up the, rather than jumping straight into very specific, um, regulations, it sets up the goals, and then it provides it as guidelines. So, the principals do have to enact dress codes, um, for their individual schools, middle school and high school, well, I guess all the schools, really. But, they have to align with the goals and then follow these, the guidelines that we provide, which are very basic, and, um, we think, we tried to be equitable too, to, to not, you know.
And I think it goes with the be safe, be kind, be responsible.
Yeah.
Which I love, I'm gonna adopt.
We talked about hats a little bit as well. And I know there's been some discussion within the middle school in particular about hats, should hats be worn, can hats be worn? This just says that hats must allow the face to be visible. And this is to, to allow them to be able, hats, hoods, any headwear, just has to allow the, the, um, face to be visible so that the teacher can interact with the student in that way. And this does not prevent anyone from wearing masks, if they want to wear masks, we would never stop them from doing that. We also, one of the changes that we made was to expand some references to, I think it, uh, said you shouldn't wear anything that shows illegal drugs, and we expanded that to things that are illegal for the students to use, like vaping and, alcohol, tobacco products shouldn't be used in the schools, and shouldn't be promoted on their clothing as well.
Yeah. Do you guys have questions, or are we just talking?
Yeah.
I like, I, no, I like the, the hat situation, 'cause I know that's been a question that I've also had, and. I think we're acknowledging that sometimes some kids may need that, as hard as their sense of security, as long as they're able to show their face. I like that.
And it's hard to get a, an IEP or a five oh four just for that.
Right. I hope they're not, yeah.
Like, it, it should be, right, but there have been situations where, you know, there have been students who, you know, present needing to be able to wear a hat in school, and they were granted it or not granted it by somebody, and, you know, it's, it, there needs to be equity.
Yeah.
It's either everybody can wear a hat, or nobody can wear a hat, and if it's nobody, well, now you're, you're not helping kids who need it to learn.
Right. It's like they were given, like, get an exemption, and why were they given an exemption, and it's, you know, it's a, it's a sort of highlight.
But at the same time, if, if, if they're using the hats in a way that is inappropriate or hindering other people's learning.
Well, yeah, of course, I mean, you have, it has to be within rea-, it has to be within reason.
It has to be, you know, you get caught so many times, well, I, I guess the only question I have is, what is the, and I did try to look, MASC's policy stuff is all messed up right now, I'm sure you know it's down. So, is this a, this is a policy that we're gonna keep?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And we'll just continue to, okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to have like, a reference of what MASC's version was, and I can't.
Oh.
So, like, now I'm like, all right, well.
So, all of the policies that we have updated in the last two years.
Okay.
We are going to keep.
All right.
Um, and we're highlighting that for them and giving them that information, so that it won't be just an MASC policy that is brought in. So, this one and the other ones that we've spent time going through and making them our own.
Right.
Will be, will remain our own.
We didn't include it, but we always, we did look at the MASC, and we liked, I mean, what I like about this one versus our old one, which was MASC kind of friendly, is also the, the, here we have like, the discipline thing again, right in it. Which, we do mention, like, you will be, you know, just as anything else, you're gonna follow the code, and, you know, and we found there was like handbook, like, there's stuff in the handbook versus like, that's like, I just, like, the GMS, that wasn't even in our policy, that was just a GMS handbook thing. Like, 'cause I was like, "Where is our GM?" 'Cause I got a complaint, and I was like, "Well, where is it? I thought they were the same as the high school," and you could, and they were like, "No," and, so. I don't know, I feel, I mean, I think it's always a work in progress too, like.
And it evolves as.
It evolves, and if you have things, if we hear of issues, then people just need to be transparent, and I hope, you know, Kevin and Roseanne will, will speak to Jay and say, "Hey, this policy's not working for us," and we'll take it back, but.
So, the, the other question I had was around the alcohol, tobacco, drugs, or vaping. Would it make sense to say controlled substances such as? So that, you know, something else, God forbid.
Which, um, the one I'm reading, it says, "May not depict, advertise, or advocate the use of alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, or other controlled substances."
Okay, so I'm confused, 'cause what I'm looking at, what is happening?
Describes it in two different places. One of them is the goal, under the goal, it says, um, "One of the goals is to ensure that students do not wear clothing with images or language depicting or advocating violence, or the use of alcohol, tobacco, drugs, or vaping." And then it gets more specific under the non-allowable dress at the bottom.
Okay, so I guess, I guess what I would say is maybe for the, for the goal, you could just say use of controlled substances. And that would simplify, that'd be one fewer place that you have a list of four things. 'Cause, you know.
Controlled substances instead of drugs?
Instead of all of it. They're all controlled substances.
Or controlled subjects.
Yeah.
Right here.
It's just a little, little cleaner in terms of goals. We don't have to list four things that we don't want. You know, who knows what else is gonna come along?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's fine.
And I think if you wanna state it outright later on, that's fine. But it's just, it's easier to maintain that way.
Do you know someone at this table bought their child a hoodie that had depicted of a heroin needle on the back, 'cause it was an album cover?
Someone here at this table?
Someone at this very table.
Jay Cubbings.
Their child said, "I can't wear this to school, Mom." And I was like, "Oh, it was me." And I said, "Oops." It's like a Green Day album, who knew?
Somebody at this table bought her daughter a tiny pocket knife on a necklace. And was informed by said child, "I can't take that to school, that's a knife," and I'm like, "Is it though?" Apparently, it is. It cuts, therefore, it's less than an inch long.
Any other discussion on the, on the policy here? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve it with the edits that we discussed.
Uh, would this be first reading?
For, I have, as a first, accept it as a first reading, yes, thank you, Laura.
Madam Chair, I move to accept JICA Student Dress Code as a first reading.
Second. Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll clean it up and we'll present it at the next meeting. All right, any member reports? Been a month, somebody must have something, Laura.
I'll be, I'll try to be quick, it was a lot, it was a lot. Got to go to Community Reading Day, I know you guys did too, so that was awesome, thanks for inviting me. I went to the math, the MASC Leadership Breakfast, or it was the Day of Learning. I'm on the Legislation Committee now, which I'm excited about. Trying to get, kind of figure that out a little bit, like, where, you know, what they start to push for, it's like before the Resolution Committee kind of thing.
Okay.
And some of theirs, like, it obviously, we're, we're obviously always advocating for all schools, so, I'd love to try to get in there and think a little bit more about this suburban funding and what we can do with MASC on that. Uh, but it was a great day of learning, um, we're, one of our goals is, we have a list of Division Four, which we're in, and just reaching out to all the members and introducing ourselves and letting them know about MASC. So, that's been great. I had an ARPA meeting. We, one thing that has not been, it's been emailed, so it's public, um, but we haven't discussed it yet, is, you might recall, we had approved three hundred thousand dollars for the schools, uh, for nursing. So, we don't actually need that money, but Evan has been great about advocating that it still continues with the school, and we're hoping to be able to use that for the ADA compliance in the, um, for all the capital. So, that has to go before ARPA still and, um, the Select Board.
When's the next ARPA meeting?
We don't know yet, we're waiting on, um, Evan is trying to connect, I'd actually love for you to connect with them too. We're trying to get them with the School Safety and Mental Health Company called, uh, to get, to use, um, for people can get in touch with a crisis counselor via text. It's kind of like, if you see something, say something, you can anonymous, uh, say if there's, you're seeing something, some bullying, and it, and it goes, and then there's like, ways, there's a kind of a curriculum that goes in, so we have pricing, Evan, and, uh, the contact there, they have been going back and forth and just haven't been able to meet yet. So, that's like our last piece of funding that we're waiting on, and then hopefully we can move forward with this. And the final thing is, which is not school exact related, but it's pretty cool, and it's going to help our students, I think, is, we approved to go to the Select Board money to build, um, workout in pla-, in a playground, like workout equipment. You may have seen in other towns, so if you're out walking, walking in one of the parks, you can do chin-ups, you can do all sorts of different, like, outdoor equipment that everybody can use, which I think is, it would be great for our students and families as well, because it's exercise.
Where would that be?
Well, um, they don't know yet, it's gonna be between two parks, Nelson Park was one of them, and then there's this newer park that they're building over by, like, Perry Street, um, where like, the Grafton Grill is, I think, over on that side of town.
Oh, Whitney.
What is?
It's called Whitney Park, but the name will probably change.
Okay, currently that park, but that's not a, that's above my pay grade, um, so, I didn't really have a choice in there. I did bring up some things, but I got chewed down. Yeah, and I think that's it, feels like it's been really busy, and I'll plug Mean Girls this weekend. We have a quorum of school committee kids in the, in the show, so looking forward to that, wishing them the best of luck next weekend.
All right, thank you, Laura. Any other member reports?
Other than my visit to Gain.
Great.
Yeah, I stopped by there, bought some bread. Community Reading Day on the second as well, which was great. All right, anything else? No? Okay. Uh, we don't have any correspondence tonight, we don't need executive session, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, Laura.
Madam Chair, I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Always.
All right, thank you very much, good night.